Good evening. It is 7:02 PM on Monday, July 13, 2020, and I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. Attending this evening's virtual board meeting are board members Paula Cole, Christine Malik, Tim Polis, Allegra Smieszek, and I am Crystal Brackey. I also anticipate we will be joined shortly by board member Peter Tensing. We also have Superintendent Yunowski and several district staff members and valued guests who you will hear from later in the agenda. This meeting is taking place virtually as allowed by Minnesota State Statute 13D.021 in light of the peacetime state of emergency declared by Governor Walz due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We will continue to meet virtually until either the state of emergency has ended or until we receive updated guidance from public health officials about the safety of in-person public meetings. Richfield Public Schools' mission statement is that we strive to inspire and empower each individual to learn, grow, and excel. And as always, that's especially important for us to keep at the center of our meeting since we are no longer together in person. We also want to welcome those of you watching this meeting live or in the future via YouTube. Thank you for being with us. So with that, our first item of business this evening is to approve the agenda before us. And I just want to make note of the small but important revision to the agenda that specifically calls out that we will be sharing a public summary of the proposed discussion that took place at our last board meeting, which was to conduct the annual superintendent evaluation. This report will take place in the information and questions from the board section of the agenda. And I just want to apologize that that was not originally called out in the agenda itself. As approval of the agenda is a routine business item, I will not individually call on board members, but rather just do an open ask for any comments or questions related to the agenda. Okay, seeing and hearing none, is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
I'll move the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Polis and a second by Ms. Cole. Christine Malik, as our board clerk, will conduct the roll call vote for this and all other action items this evening.
Okay, so we'll start with Ms. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Polis?
Aye.
Ms. Smieszek?
Aye.
The clerk votes aye and Chair Brackey.
Aye. The agenda is approved. So we now move into the information and proposals, non-action items section of the agenda. I received two requests for public comment this evening, but unfortunately, we had technical difficulties with one of the videos. So I'm going to read one written statement and hope that the video comment can be shared with board members at a later date. So just wanted to acknowledge that. And also, as a reminder, share that guidance for public comment is available in Board Policy 216 on the richfieldschools.org website. So this is a public comment received in writing from Carol Dax. "I have lived in Richfield for 68 years, graduated from Richfield, raised four children that all graduated from Richfield, and worked in the Richfield school system for 23 years. I started out at the high school working in the in-school suspension room. I have seen firsthand the importance of having a SRO officer present in the school. Outside of the obvious safety and security in the school setting comes the relationship building between officers, staff, and students. Having police in schools builds relationships with the students. It may be the only time that many of them will ever talk to a police officer. It might be the only time they have a positive interaction with the police, or it might change a negative thought to a positive simply by talking to the officers in the lunchroom. Society needs positive police interaction with people and with the community. School-based policing is one of the best ways to provide that service. With everything that is going on in the world today, this should be a no-brainer. Being a lifelong resident, I consider this money well-spent. I strongly urge this not to be one of your budget cuts. Please let the teachers be able to teach." So, thank you, Carol, for sharing that with us. The next opportunity for public comment will be at our August 17 board meeting. And the superintendent's update this evening has two really important items for discussion, both that involve looking into the future for Richfield Schools. So I now turn things over to Superintendent Yunowski.
Right, so as Scott queues up the video around our facility project update, we have been moving forward with construction over the course of the summer. Rain has not necessarily been our friend throughout the entire summer, but certainly having students not in our building has been helpful. And so as soon as Scott gets that queued up, we'll play the video from our construction team, and then Craig or Andy will answer some questions.
This is Andy Faulkner with ICS with a facilities project update. "We are currently in the construction document design phase of the Central Education Center project with anticipated completion near the end of September or early October. Phasing is being worked on to determine what areas we can begin prior to the end of the school year, and we are currently targeting to begin in late January, early February in the current administration space. We would then move into the classroom wings or the educational wings in the months of June through August. Exterior signage design is also underway with the new district logos, and we'll have renderings available for review prior to issuance for pricing. The STEM project update is that the project is on schedule. It's actually a little bit ahead of schedule and moving along nicely. Everything is scheduled to be ready for final cleaning the week of July 27. We've got a picture here of the dish room and also of one of the pre-K classroom entries. Potential risks or delays in regards to STEM are that there are select pieces of furniture that are planned to be installed the week of August 28. Manufacturing shutdowns have led to these delays with COVID-19. We do have some other options available with existing desks because the teacher desks and file cabinets are the pieces that are scheduled to be delayed on this project. And the items do not impact the opportunity to begin instruction in the classroom. So we're confident that everything will be set up and ready for teachers. The budget summary at STEM is that the project is 90% complete with 3% of the scheduled contingency amount remaining. Given the stage of the project, any unforeseen conditions are significantly reduced, and additional requests to the project will be reviewed for potential funding alternatives if changes are necessary, and we don't have the allocated funds within the STEM budget. Centennial project update is that the special ed suite is in the finishes. This was the former media center, which we got into early. So you can see in that top picture that it's already painted out. It's ready for ceiling tiles and some flooring to go in there, and will be wrapped up shortly. The lower picture is of one of the new bathroom renovations. That's the common plumbing wall. So everything is on track and ready for final cleaning the week of August 10. After that, we'll have still some boiler room work and test and balancing to be completed during the school year. Potential risks or delays to Centennial are in regards to furniture with the COVID-19 manufacturing shutdowns. The media center shelves are the primary thing that we've been notified of that we're concerned about. Some of the other items are flexible seating or chairs that go in a conference room type of thing. And we do have all of the former, the old furniture in trailers, so we can bring that into the building and utilize it if we need it and do not have the new stuff on time. Again, these items do not impact the opportunity to begin instruction in the classroom, so we're comfortable with that. The student desks and chairs are scheduled to arrive on August 24 through the 27. The budget summary is that the project is 60% complete with 65% of the scheduled contingency amount remaining. Demolition is complete, which reduces that unforeseen or existing condition risk. So we're comfortable with where Centennial sits overall as well. The Sheridan Hills project is moving along with some restroom rough-in work that you can see in the top picture. The middle picture is the former admin space that will be the new media center. And then the bottom right picture is of one of the classrooms where we removed the tack board, flooring, ceilings, got some new mechanical roughed in, and then we're furring out some walls for some mechanical piping and casework. Potential risks or delays to Sheridan Hills are, again, the select pieces of furniture. None of these are related to the individual learning space for students. It's, again, flexible furniture, soft seating in some of these breakout spaces. We've got the existing furniture that we can use if we need it, so they do not impact the opportunity to begin instruction in the classroom. We do have a concern with the casework delivery. It's currently scheduled to arrive on August 17, which is pretty tight. However, the contractors have committed to work in overtime and doing whatever they need to do to get that done, definitely before students come back and hopefully before the teachers get back on the 28. And that would not be an owner cost as it was the manufacturer's issue with the casework being delayed. The budget summary on Sheridan is that it is currently 25% complete with 85% of the scheduled contingency remaining. Demolition is complete on the first phase, which reduces this unforeseen, as we mentioned earlier. The kitchen addition work is scheduled to begin late summer, early fall, and soil correction is a known risk. This is a project that we did split up into two summers after looking at it to make sure that we didn't bite off more than we could chew for this building specifically. And everything is tracking and looking to be ready for the start of school. The middle school status update is the media center and the flex areas. We did get into those early, and they are sheet-rocked out, and they're ready to start painting here within the next week and a half. Special ed spaces are also along that same timeframe, and we're working throughout on mechanical ductwork, piping, installations, roughens. The finishes are slated to begin this week on the second and third floor. Current risks that we have for the middle school are the media center shelving again. They currently scheduled for delivery on September 18 due to the manufacturer shutdowns. So we have the existing shelving that we can use if need be, and we are having conversations individually with the buildings to determine what this looks like and what we need to do. In regards to the middle school specifically, we looked at it in relation to STEM and what we learned from STEM. The restroom work was phased to take place during the second summer as opposed to all in the first summer like we did at STEM, just to lessen the load of some of the overall work on that. And that has clearly helped us out in our overall schedule. We also are aware of some of the fire-rated mechanical shaft work that we found at STEM and assumed it to be the same condition at the middle school, which in several cases it has been. And we also built some temporary classrooms down in the lower-level gym very early in the year and cycled classes through there in order to get in the rooms to abate them prior to the end of the school year. The budget summary for the middle school is that it is 20% complete with approximately 98% of the scheduled contingency amount remaining. We do have some proposal requests and review, but overall, we're comfortable with where we sit at this stage with the middle school project as well. The high school is moving along in several areas of the building. The upper picture is the south classroom tower bathrooms. So as you can see, that's very near completion. We've got to put some ceiling tiles in and do a good final clean on that. The middle picture is of the flexible learning area in the south classroom tower, right next to where it ties into the new link addition between the south and north classroom tower. And then the bottom picture is of the new athletic corridor on the north side of the main gym, which has a corridor, so you don't have to go through the main gym to get to the auxiliary gyms, as well as it has an elevator to transport people up and down between the different levels of that addition. This is behind schedule, and we are currently tracking it to be done a few weeks after the start of school, somewhat weather-dependent, given the exterior work. However, this didn't exist previously, so we think we're in a good spot to open school, even if this is not 100% complete. The potential risks or delays, again, we've got some furniture delays on some flexible space seating. These aren't instructional pieces, so we're comfortable with those being a little bit delayed. And again, we've got some other pieces in the building that we can use if we need to. The main gym wood floor and painting is at risk for completion by August 17. The contractor believes they will be done. We, however, have some reluctance to agree 100% with that. We'll see as they get going, but the install should go quite quickly. It's just a matter of the finishing process and then all the game line painting and that that we anticipate maybe pushed a little bit past August 17 or right up to it. Another area is the third-floor main hallway restrooms. They are at risk to be completed by the start of school due to a mechanical shaft. It was an existing mechanical shaft that didn't comply, and we've had to work with the building official to determine solutions on that. Tarazzo patching is also scheduled to be completed throughout the building, but historically, the tarazzo patching has taken us quite a bit longer than anticipated. So we're carefully tracking that to make sure that it gets done or what doesn't get done, we have solutions on when it will get done without any impact to the school operations. The other item is the third-floor classroom tower link, so that link between the north and south classrooms. We're starting from the bottom, working up, and the way it's currently tracking is that third floor could be a push to be completed. This does include some staff offices within that link addition, and so we're working to determine the impact on that and where those staff offices could be temporarily housed while we complete it. It is on track to complete within a few weeks of the start of school. The budget summary for the high school is the project is roughly 85% complete with 12% of the scheduled contingency amount remaining. We do have two very large-dollar change orders that we're still reviewing, as well as some other existing changes. The high school contingency is not going to be adequate to cover the total projected project costs. So we're looking at additional funding within the overall project budget as items are completed, such as surveying and soil borings. We know those were all completed, so we were able to take the balances remaining in that to allocate to the high school. And we're also looking at additional items that are budgeted in the overall project for if they may have some funds available within these scopes. So we're tracking it. We believe we have some solutions, but it is certainly something that we have some concern on. Our DLS current project status is, we're wrapping up punch lists. We've had quite a bit of activity there the last few weeks, getting punch list items completed, site work addressed. We've had some settling that had to be readdressed out there for drainage. And one new vestibule door remains to be installed on the east side of the building. That is supposed to be complete this week. The mechanical systems commissioning has been going on very intensely lately, knowing that the building is going to be occupied here again this week. And as we found things that were completed, we've found other things that needed to be buttoned up or tweaked, and so we're still working on that. But all in all, the reports of the temperature in the building are good. It's just more some very specific items related to the operation of the units. The budget summary is the project is complete with one final change order to be issued to close out the financial aspect. And we're projecting the current contingency balance will be just under $38,000 after this final change order. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Holgy is going to summarize a couple of things before we transition to open the extra questions.
So just a couple of comments. As you saw in the presentation, we're obviously very attuned to where there are potential impacts on the start of school. And a lot of our attention is being put into those instructional spaces or the common spaces where we have students entering and exiting and things like that. You've got a good rundown of some of the areas that are at risk, but as we look at that, we feel like it really has minimal, if any, impact on kind of the functioning of the school as far as being able to have students back in school or have kind of those systems set up as at the best possible way. The biggest hindrance, obviously, in that was the furniture across the board, where we had manufacturers that with the coronavirus impact in their manufacturing facilities had shut down, where things had been previously ordered and were set to be delivered earlier, are starting to run behind because of those manufacturing facilities. And then the middle or the high school obviously continues to surprise us with over 13 different additions to the building and things like that. There are things that we continue to discover that are both causing some timing issues as well as some financial issues. In the timing piece, we obviously are looking at what are the areas that are going to least impact the school functioning as students are returning and trying to mitigate that as much as possible so that the contractors are putting their energy into those core educational spaces and things like that that have that high level of impact on our student environment. And then financially, as Andy talked about, there are a number of different places where we had different budget amounts, where we know we're not going to be using as much or we don't anticipate needing to use as much. And so those are being reallocated to that high school, which does have some continued expenditures in that area. At this point, we don't believe it's going to be impacting any of the future construction projects. You heard in here, obviously, STEM is one where we have used most of our contingency at this point and are very close in that area. We were able to learn from that experience at the STEM school and apply that to the middle school, so we don't have those same surprises. So at this point, that looks like it's going to have a net positive balance in that contingency. But that's some opportunities, as well as some of the other areas where we have budgeted more than what we're anticipating needing at this point. Worst-case scenario, we do have some reserves that we've built up in our LTFM, as well as in our capital that we can be allocating for furniture or for some of these parts that are essential to be kind of coordinated as part of this work that we maybe had, you know, been looking at some funds for three to five years down the road that give us some time to reprioritize those efforts in those areas too. So, again, we're highly focused in these areas, especially as a number of these projects are nearing completion, making sure that, you know, it's not going to be detracting from Central or the other buildings that are kind of just starting construction. In most cases, other than the high school, that contingency has been the right amount or has been less than what's needed except at that high school level. So I think that responds to some of the questions that we had from Chair Brackey and some of the other comments that we'd received. In the meantime, if there are other questions, Andy and I are certainly here to respond to those as well. But wanted to make sure you guys saw where we're at, and we will anticipate continuing to provide updates to the board as well over the next month.
Thank you, Craig, and thank you, Andy, for both your wonderful video performance and for being here with us again tonight. Also want to just welcome Peter Tensing, who has joined the meeting. So I want everybody to know that he is now with us. So board members will now each have time for questions and/or comments on what Craig has already shared, some of which were my questions. So thank you, Craig. Board members will pass the microphone on to the next board member in alphabetical order once they are done, and Paula Cole is up first.
Can't find the mic. Thank you, Andy and Craig. I have no questions. It's very thorough, detailed, as usual, and I enjoy the first row seat to work from Centennial. I will pass it to Christine.
So I would say the same. Thank you, guys. I think it was very thorough and very transparent about some of the challenges and where things are. I really appreciate that. There are no surprises coming towards us as we move forward to the fall. We know what's coming, and that is really helpful. I've kind of been listening to a lot of it by being at the project oversight committee meetings, and that has been really helpful. And so I kind of have a front row seat to how much effort goes into all of this. So I think they've done a really good job. And so I don't have any questions. Just thank you, guys. It looks, it looks good. And we will, I will pass to Tim.
Thank you. Craig, you'd mentioned that if, in the event that there are, you know, that the funds aren't enough, we have access to other funds through capital or LTFM. So you also mentioned some unused funds from elsewhere in the budget, like some parts of the project that did not, either we either chose not to do them after having learned how it went in one building, or they just came in under, under cost. And so as those are completed, those things that are completed that don't use all the funds allocated to them, that does not just get shifted into contingency. It stays in the category it's in.
And Andy's kind of managing the details of the budget, but we're able to move those different pieces to different parts of the budget. So as he talked about, as we know, like the borings and things like that, we haven't used it, so now we can use that to that high school contingency fund to cover those different parts. A budget can obviously be reprioritized at different times. We are trying to hold true to making sure each one of those buildings have the improvements that we have dedicated to them, but they don't necessarily have to stay in the specific categories other than we have two different bond sets. One is our indoor air quality, the mechanical side of it, and one is that larger facilities project. And so those do need to remain true to the purposes for which they are built. And we believe that we're able to still do that within the work that we're doing.
Do we have a sense, if the funds that we have on hand are not adequate and we do have to reach into these, these other streams, do we have a sense of scale for what that might be? Like, is it, you know, is it $10,000? Is it $100,000? Is it $1 million? Is it $10 million?
So right, definitely not $10 million. Definitely not into the high level of millions at this point. We believe that, at this point, we believe that we're able to cover it all within that facilities project. It is getting tighter at this point. We do know that we have one major school left to bid. Other projects really are in place, and as we've seen, are falling within the contingencies, except for the high school situation. And those larger buildings, we are able to mimic those. So right now, we believe it's all going to fit within that facilities project, indoor air quality project. At this, you know, so that's where we're at right now. We're kind of planning forward as far as what would happen if we go deeper or if we have more larger surprises. What does that mean? Hopefully, we don't have more larger surprises. And as Andy talked about, the areas that we have large construction left to take place where demolition tends to be the area where we have the greatest surprises because we opened up walls that hadn't been opened up for 40 years, and we're finding things that have some impact or digging, what was it, 20 feet into the ground and finding asbestos coils and electrical cords and things like that that create some significant expenditures to the project that were just in that area. Andy, do you have anything else to add to that or?
No, I think you summed it up very well. That's the, the high school is a bit of an onion, so to speak. And as we open things up, we're finding things that didn't match up with the existing drawings during design. So that's really been our biggest struggle with the high school. The only one other comment I would like to make on the presentation is that the numbers that I represented regarding the percentages for the contingency are under the assumption that the change orders that are before you later in the agenda tonight are approved.
Okay. Okay.
Could clarify that they're not on top of that.
We're all, we're all on a spot now when we change it all later. They've already been baked in. Okay. And one other question, just specific to the building with the high school with some impact on the gym and the gym floor perhaps for opening. So I think there's only one fall sport that relies on gym space. Is that correct? So do we have, I assume someone's been working on a plan and a workaround for that?
Yeah, so the main gym is the one that's under construction. The other gyms are available for the temporary pieces. As you saw, the target completion date was August 17. And so the practices are the areas that would have the greatest impact in that arena. And then just knowing that we have a couple of the gyms in the area and stuff like that. But we have been communicating awareness around that potential is happening.
All right. Thank you. I have nothing else. I'll pass to Ms. Smieszek.
I don't have any additional questions. I appreciated the way that the presentation was formatted. It was really clear what the challenges were and how the budget fit into it. So thank you for that clarity. I will pass to Mr. Tensing.
And I do not have any questions, so I will pass back to the chair.
Thank you. The question that I asked just about the, the total financial picture, I think, has been well answered. The last thing, and I think it's more that I just want to hear that this is going to happen in the next month to month and a half, are making adjustments in real time as necessary so that we do not have the final days that we had before the start of school last year? Because I think we, we spoke many times as a board and with our staff that we were committed to not repeating the experience of people really starting the school year already in a challenging place because of the stress of those final days and the amount that, that staff were working just to ensure that their spaces were set up and ready. So what I'm hearing is that there is a commitment that we will not be repeating that experience, even with the asterisk that we don't entirely know yet what the start of the school year is going to look like. But I just want to make sure that I say that and give you a chance to respond to that, Andy, Craig, or Steve.
Yes. I can, okay, absolutely. This is a prime focus. You know, when we're putting together the presentation, we actually sat down with each one of the contractors, their site superintendent, the project manager, and had very candid conversations about this and, you know, threw it on the table. This is what we went through last summer. We do not want to, I do not want to spend my entire Labor Day with Rick Rannier, the building official in the city of Richfield, walking through in order to get kids in the building. So, you know, tell us what you think right now, and that's where we went through, what are our risks? What are our potentials? And that's kind of how we actually came to the, you know, the comment about the high school with the main gym. And the contractors are confident that it's going to be completed. Us professionals that are working for you guys have other viewpoints on that. It's going to be a push. We're not as optimistic as they are, but we've, I think we've done a good job this time of truly identifying the areas where there may be any risk and then focusing on them. And again, like Craig, like Craig said, you know, really focusing on the, the impact of students and teachers. Like if we've got some auxiliary spaces that may be lagging behind or maybe ahead, maybe we should stop pushing on those and focus on the, the areas that we truly need.
And I think Christine can, can affirm that that part of the conversation is happening at every one of the project oversight committee meetings of kind of no surprises. And speaking of no surprises, we had flooding in our basement at the high school over the weekend. So that was a surprise that obviously delays some of this work, but I think Ellis Black was very responsive at getting people out there right away so they can continue the project. Andy was over there trying to figure out how do we move forward with that stuff as well. So, but just mitigating and minimizing as many of those surprises, making sure that people are held accountable for that work and Andy partnering with the contractors and subcontractors on, when they tell us that they're going to have people there, making sure that they have people there and knowing that that's not necessarily what happened last year, but knowing that that upfront helps set some standards and of expectations and making sure that they're doing what they need. And I think you heard even things where people are willing to bring in and pay people overtime, you know, for that transition of when furniture isn't arriving on time and stuff like that.
I would definitely confirm that it's always discussed in the oversight committee meetings. So.
I will just do one final call if there are any additional comments or questions that came up before we move on to the second topic. I don't see any, so Steve, we'll turn it back to you.
All right. So while Scott queues up the strategic plan presentation, we're going to share with you tonight the transformed process for strategic plan, and I'll keep talking after the presentation goes. This is Superintendent Nodowski here with you tonight with another update on our strategic planning process 2020 through 2025. We have named our plan Richfield Realized. Richfield Public Schools, working alongside our students, families and community, look to empower our students and ensure that we achieve educational equity, school and learning that ensures that all students are prepared and able to meet their future goals and their future dreams. As we realize these goals alongside our students, we retain our overall mission. Richfield Public Schools inspires and empowers each student, each individual, to learn, grow, and excel. Through this process, we have identified and clarified our brand messages, which help us keep focused on our identity. We are a real community with positive relationships. We value personalized learning for every student. We focus on a well-balanced education, providing rich opportunities, and we strive to transform our teaching and provide innovation in action. Never has our need to redefine school been more relevant than these past months as we worked through the challenges presented by COVID-19. COVID-19 has also created some challenges that required us to revise and update our timeline. At our June 15th meeting, I presented background information to the board. Today, I will be showing a first draft of our branded plan. Due to restrictions created by COVID-19, we have not been fully able to gather the input and feedback necessary to ensure that we are ready to launch with a finalized plan. In our updated timeline, I will work with administration and staff in August and September to review, review our progress, gather feedback, and make revisions. In September and October, we will work with our students and community to also gather input and make revisions. As 2020 comes to a close in November and December, we will create final revisions and draft our final document with a full launch in January 2021. This timeline makes it possible for us to work in January through June of 2021 to create clear measurement tools and vision cards to help us maintain focus on our goals and to communicate our progress. It's always challenging to push back timelines, but as we have worked together to ensure that there is broad-based participation and voice in this process, the added months are definitely needed to maintain connection to the voices of our students, families, staff, and community. In the board packet on the pages following this presentation are the draft plan. Page one provides an introduction and background information. Each proposed strategy area has its own page, one for academics, climate and culture, activities, business and operations, communication and marketing, along with an other named category. An initial review, as I read through our plan, shows the need for further development and supports our need to gather additional feedback from students, staff, and our community. Clarifying and defining activities within each area needs to continue forward, and also our commitment to equity as a district. While it is weaved in and out throughout the plan, it is not explicitly stated in a way that aligns fully to our values. So with that, I will pause and open things up for questions. So I gave a little bit of an intro on a timeline shift as we look to make sure that we can roll things out and really have our administration and staff review and look and give additional input, and then also student, staff, and our community to give input before we do a final publication. What we haven't done is, is had the time with a large amount of staff, since we were obviously interrupted in, in March, to review with our team members the way we feel we need to, and then get that second review from the community. And so looking at pushing things back in the way that I've outlined, but you have in the board packet in front of you, basically what it will look like and the things that we have gathered to date, certainly with some review and some, some revision and editing that will definitely be needed to really put our, our values and our priorities to the forefront and really take things to the next level. So with that, I'll pause and let Crystal open up the questions.
Thank you. And first, we'll just say you, you might have a future, an audio narration in front of you. I feel like every video presentation you do gets more dramatic. So with that, I see Dr. Daniel's got a good chuckle out of that. I feel like my work here is done. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paula to start with any comments or questions.
I second that motion of yours, Crystal, and I'm curious to know how many times Steve has to record or if it's just a natural and it's like one shot and done. But other than that, I don't have any questions. Pass it to Ms. Malik.
So Paula, what I will say is, first off, for the, for the audience watching, it is relatively humbling to start on a presentation and watch multiple faces laughing at me openly as I begin a presentation. What I'll say, Paula, is that I actually type up a script before I do my presentation, and then, much like I do with my Spanish announcements, practice them and rehearse, and then go forward with it so that I can not just sound like a robot as I am reading and presenting, and I can be dramatic and fun as we're trying to do our taped presentations.
And Andy, you did, Andy did a great job too, so don't feel left out, Andy. And then Steve, I think you're really brave. You know, in four and a half years, I have never dared to listen to myself in one of these meetings, so you do it every time, and I, I just couldn't do it. So good job.
Thank you.
Okay, my first question is going to be a little strange, but do we, so since this is really going to implement in essentially in 2021, should we, should it be changed to the 2021, 2026 strategic plan? Because we kind of, with everything that's gone on, everything's been pushed back. If it's going to be a five-year plan, would we want to add that year? I'm just, I can't remember how we did it before, if we implemented in 2016 or if we...
That, that actually is a very logical question. I think we'll have to play that by year as we move along. I don't think we know what our, what our work in the fall is going to be. As we've talked about with our partners, with our bargaining units, we have a whole load of things we'd like to work on with teachers and staff in terms of training and preparation. And depending on what we do, those all may end up being shelved for hybrid professional development, distance learning, professional development, and making sure that we are doing our best in those areas. So I think that's a great question to answer as we go through the first six months of this revision, and we certainly can look to extending as we may have to push some of those priorities out even further.
Okay, and then, so the other thing that comes to mind is when we, when we did all the original work on this, we didn't really know about COVID-19, and I really feel like that's going to have a big effect on the next five years. Things aren't going to just be over in one year, two years, and I don't know, it seems like a lot of work to incorporate those thoughts or some of that work or the safety concerns and things like that into this, or if we would want to do an additional document to talk about that and how it fits in with our strategic plan. I just, I feel like I look at this and I see some really great things. I love the professional development opportunities that are commented on multiple times in there, but it seems like there's a big blank spot in there where it's not addressed and we are looking at some really challenging things in the next couple of years, and we don't know what's even going to happen in the fall. So I kind of feel like we should at least address it, even if it's an additional document, that it should be incorporated somehow in, in what our strategic planning is, since this is a very different world than what the world we were in when we started this.
I think that, that gives a great justification and reasoning why we feel the need to push it off, because part of that voice is to hear what are those COVID safety components and instructional components and relational components that are different that we want to make sure that we integrate. I, I, again, I am just responding, and so I haven't gotten a large amount of input, but I do think it would be important to integrate into this document. The reason we have a strategic plan and why we have accomplished what we have wanted to over the last set of years is that this becomes our focal point. And so it's important that this becomes the overriding document, a living document that we look at, that we review. We use it to plan our professional development and the work that we do at teachers and so and all of our staff. And so if we're looking at the things to integrate for safety or for COVID reasons, I think, I think we would want to integrate some of those components into the plan. You know, obviously, there are some pieces that will be separate, but overarching pieces in terms of school safety, effective hybrid programming, effective distance programming, and the supports that our students and families need, I think that absolutely should be worked into this plan over the next few months.
Okay, that is about all I have, so I will hand it off to Mr. Paula.
Thank you. Mike, I, I appreciate the, the presentation and, and, and the lead in, into it, and appreciate all the time the community and others have given us in terms of helping draft the document. My questions are more about what, what, what are in the back that weren't in the presentation, weren't in the, the recorded presentation, the documents on academics, climate, culture, activities, and so on. You know, just some of the specifics, when I, when I see, you know, maintain class size as a goal within academics, and there's no guideline, there's, there's no numbers provided for it, which is also pleasing in the sense because it's very difficult to live by very hard numbers and have them within our strategic plan. Also, as we look forward and relating to the COVID and, and the state budget and, and all the things that have been suggested about future funding levels, it, it will be a real challenge to maintain class size, whatever maintain means, and, and we will probably have to be as flexible in understanding on, on what maintain means, if, if that is how we characterize it within this document. When we, on the academic side, when we say increased course, course offerings, and there are some suggests, I think there are some suggested ideas within it, I, I just ask are those, are those proposed by students or community members or adults or others? Because I, I've brought up a number of times how, how students are empowered and have the opportunity to help drive the courses we run, especially at the high school with respect to seven period day, and how they're empowered to, to help create things that are of interest to them and meaningful to them, and we still have not unlocked that. So I like seeing it as something in, in the strategic plan, like we will have to push it, as you, as you'd said, this is our, if this is our guiding document, we will have to put some, some sincere effort to, to unlocking that and, and being willing to run with the course offerings that students say are meaningful to them and will be accretive to their, to their learning and, and, and growth. Climate and culture, there was, there was something about school pride, and one thing I would say is an opportunity for us melding that both presentations that we've had so far, what, what a great opportunity for students in the buildings as, as these shiny new buildings are open, to have students, you know, really, really take pride in them and hopefully do their part in maintaining them. As, as I know, some ages have more challenges than others in terms of maintaining buildings. A, a friend at the middle school once said, I don't know why they even install soap dispensers, something about, about the, the way kids treat, treat some things. But I really do hope that the, the sense of pride can expand to, to, you know, the, the role that, that, you know, the students are the reason we have these buildings, period. And so I hope they, they take ownership of them in a, in a very positive way. And lastly, on, on business operations, there, there are a couple of areas where, where higher pay or compensation were, were cited as our strategic plan. And, and I'm challenged, that, that, as, you know, on the board, we are obligated to use public funds to, to offer our staff at a, at a level commensurate to the community standards of what these roles demand in the economy, right? So if we, we, we are not really going to be market leaders in a sense for any categories of, or, or we can be market leaders, but we have to be thoughtful about how we do that, I think. And so if it's within our strategic plan to pay a certain category of, of staff higher, and that's in the, it's, and that's in the, the strategic plan, how exactly do we go about negotiating with that group when they can point to the document and the public is, and we've affirmed, well, we're going to pay you higher, when, when we're in, when we are faced with the budget realities of, you know, the, the funding we get from the state and from the public, as well as, as well as things like having to negotiate with other groups as well? And so that, that, that is a, a challenging thing for me to see. I, I always want our staff to be paid well. I want them to feel comfortable with their salaries, but I don't know if we can say it is a driving focus to pay everyone, to pay one category more unless we have a lot, unless we have some data to suggest that they're not paid adequately relative to the market that we're in. That's all I have.
Yes, and it actually thematically synthesizes itself together in my head. As I think about where we had clear feedback and inputs, they're in bold or in red. So if you look at the academics page and we look at the top five priorities, close the achievement gap, maintain small class sizes, continue to promote and support value by literacy, increase course offerings, and ensure all students learn about post-secondary options, those to me are the large focal points. Underneath are the, some of the wide range of feedback that we got. I think that is the area that we absolutely need some focus. We haven't had time to build consensus on what are those strategies. And so as we think about, yes, we want to maintain a focus on small class size, an example you used, trying to define what that actually means and come to a consensus agreement on what we're willing to publish, I think that is some of the work over the next couple of months. In terms of whether or not at business and operations, we want to maintain or improve staff and hiring and create a focus that supports our staff, I think we absolutely commit to that. What that looks like in the, the subactivities, those are the things across each of these strategy areas and across each of the larger pieces that, that I think we really need additional feedback and, and consensus work on. And so I see those as being some of the main areas to really look at as we go forward.
Well, thank you very much. I will pass it to Ms. Mieschek.
Thank you. I'm really grateful that we're taking a minute to pause and being comfortable with pushing that timeline back. I agree with a lot of what Director Malik said about the impacts of COVID, and I'm also thinking about what we learned from COVID. And I'm also thinking about what we learned from COVID in regards to, um, teaching and learning, and I think that's something we're still kind of reflecting on. And then, at the same time, we, um, had the murder of George Floyd, and our community became an epicenter of a global movement. I've been hearing that potential the largest movement ever. Um, so I think we would be remiss to keep pushing through and not really reflect on how those two things have impacted our students and staff and maybe, to some degree, redefined education and what we want from education. As I look at, at those brand messages, I think there's a ton of space within those to really stay true to, um, you know, those four, four big categories. I think there's, um, you know, innovation, opportunity, personalization, and community are such broad topics. And so, um, I'd be curious to hear from our community, um, our school community with those more specific things, if, if there's pieces that we're missing or things that seem less important now than they did, um, six months ago. So, um, I, I think that's really smart to take some time and, um, get feedback again. So, thank you for that, and, um, I don't have any additional questions, but I'll, I'll be very curious to see what, if any, changes there are. Or maybe, you know, just a different take on things we've already identified. Uh, I'll pass to Mr. Tensing.
So my question is, um, to just try to get some clarity on what the role of the board is at this point in time. Are you looking for, uh, very specific feedback and questions? How do we, how do we sort of get the right balance between, uh, a need to get a document that reflects the community on the whole, but also to have a document that is coherent and cohesive and, um, you know, sort of really aligned with our values? I, I guess that, I'm going to answer my own question to some extent in that I think that the role of the board primarily is, you know, since we are the folks who are accountable at the end of the day, um, the role of the board is to make sure that the document is fully aligned with our, our values overall. But I guess that I just was looking for feedback in terms of, as we get into kind of the operational pieces with the timeline that Steve has laid out, um, what would be most helpful in this August and September timeframe for individual board members to be doing?
Um, so I really think there is, um, two components. One is being aware of this proposed or planned shift, um, where we will gather additional feedback from our community, um, which means that it would then go out to committees again and safe and supportive schools again, and we will gather some additional feedback. Um, and so that is just, I'm having that conversation, um, and sort of acknowledging, as Director Smiesek pointed out, you know, COVID, George Floyd, we have had some major things happen in our world, um, and all of this information was gathered before then. Um, and so we really need to step back and do that piece and, and really look at that and integrate that into the overall plan. I'd say, in the intermediary time, the other thing that I would suggest to the board, and obviously I will be working proactively on this, is setting goals for me as the superintendent and what are, really, my goals end up nested in the strategic plan. So even though we don't have a new strategic plan then that is approved, I think we still have very clear goals to move our work forward, um, led by what we are trying to accomplish anyways. So I don't think, I, I think as a board is keeping me moving towards this particular strategic plan because I don't think we're going to move away from this in general, and then having a set of focused goals that will evolve and work in connection to this, uh, together. Um, and so that's some of our work for the fall, um, and then continuing to partner through committees, advisories, and other methods to give your voice as a community member, um, and not just as a board member to this partnership. Because ultimately, the, the plan will come back to the board for final approval. Um, and so, in the meanwhile, it is overseeing and, and staying in that governance role to, to watch, monitor, and support.
All right, I will pass it along to Chair Brocki.
Thank you. And I, uh, I, I think my comments, uh, follow Pete's in terms of trying to figure out what is the right sort of altitude and, and level of detail to share at this moment, um, while also, I think, just affirming, uh, many of Allegra's comments about appreciating the shift in timing and the space to come back to this, because I, I actually think this is the most important, um, thing for us to ensure that we really feel good about. So with that, there are two overarching things that I want to share related to the draft in front of us, and then two much more micro, and I acknowledge that they are much more micro in terms of some of the language, but I think the language really matters, so I wanted to share it at this point in time as well. So for the overarching thoughts, I think the first thing that feels missing to me is the narrative that weaves it together in terms of a holistic vision of excellence that we're driving towards. I think as it is right now, it kind of just does feel like a list of the things that we're saying we're going to focus on and not the values and, um, outcomes that we are driving toward and, towards and why we are driving towards them. And then I think the second, um, overarching thing that feels missing to me is wanting to see more specifically about racial equity and how anti-racism work would fit into these plans, because this is my personal belief and bias coming in, but I don't think that we are likely to get to the outcomes that we're describing in these list of things that we want here without a clear and explicit focus on this, um, as a district and at a district level. And especially thinking about all of the, the thousands of comments, um, that we did receive over the last six months, I think things around diversity, around equity, around race were very consistent, both in terms of that being the sort of asset and strength that we have as a district, and I think people wanting more. And so I just want to reflect that that feels missing to me from this version of the document. So the two more micro things that I would share as far as language, one is, I just, I, I struggle with the term achievement gap, given, um, some of the broader conversations that have happened, uh, around why that can be a really problematic term, because it focuses more on the gap or the distance between student groups, and I think can falsely set white student performance as the bar for excellence, instead of having an overall indicator and how we talk about excellence and opportunity. So I wanted to share that. And then the second thing is the language around improving student behavior actually felt very deficit-based to me, um, in terms of identifying student behavior as being sort of the student's fault. And I, I, I believe I know what we're trying to get at, um, in that particular item, but I think the way that it's phrased is probably not aligned to sort of how I think about it personally. So those are, those are the things that I wanted to share.
Yes, there are certainly, um, details that need to be worked out and improved in the language throughout. There are areas missing, and there are areas where the language, I would agree, does not fully align to how we have stated our overall values. Um, and those are some of the things that definitely need to transform in the coming months.
Great, thank you. Just felt important for me to say that at this point in the process, so I appreciate the time and space to do so. So those are the end of my comments, but as always, I want to just pause and give a chance for any additional board member questions or comments that came up in the discussion. Okay, I don't see any, so we will move into the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the consent agenda containing routine business items. Um, and since this is a routine item, I won't individually call on board members, but we'll rather just take a moment to pause and see if there are any questions or requests related to the consent agenda. I don't see any, uh, so do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I will second.
We have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Mr. Paulus. Any discussion?
Hi.
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 Ms. Mieschek?
Hi.
Hi, the consent agenda is approved. There is no old business before us this evening, so we are going to move right into the new business section of the agenda. And our first four items are facilities change orders that were alluded to in the facilities presentation earlier this evening. So, uh, Chief Administrative Officer Craig Holgie will introduce all of the change orders together, and then we will vote on them individually by building.
Very good, thank you. Uh, the first set of change orders we have are for Centennial Elementary School for change orders six, seven, and eight, uh, for a total amount of $45,108.04. Uh, change order six, um, has to do with a very, uh, various demolition work and some mechanical work that's associated with that part of the project of $22,766. Change order seven is for just over $8,000 for some, um, mechanical, uh, unit repairs and things like that. And then change order eight is $13,969.72 for additional demolition associated with removal of existing concrete settings behind marker boards and some of the wall repairs associated with that, as well as some, um, additional roof choice work in there as well. Uh, next up, we have Richfield High School change orders twenty-five and twenty-six, uh, for a total of $52,104.74. Change order twenty-five is for $29,387, um, and it's just a variety of various items, including some additional work with the new front desk, some demolition of the lower-level locker rooms, widening a doorway to, um, get our commercial washing machine into the area, um, as well as some electrical feeds and other areas like that. And then change order twenty-six is for $22,717, um, for some ceiling modifications, some electrical work and some structural, structural work. Uh, that project, um, as we talked about, is running tight on that contingency. Um, this brings that to $36,691,071, up from an, an original $35,430,000. Uh, next up, we have Sheridan Hills, change orders three and four, uh, for a total of $25,357. Uh, change order three is for $17,875, um, which has to do with a lot of bathroom plumbing modifications and some work in that area, um, as well as some additional electrical demolition, um, and other footing modifications. And then, uh, change order four is for, uh, $7,482 for some various roof work associated with that part of the project and some re-insulation of some plumbing. And then, uh, change order, uh, the next up, we have Richfield STEM, change order twenty-three for a, uh, net increase of $40,504.81 for some mechanical and, um, lighting work at that building. Uh, so that is, uh, the series of change orders. Andy and I are here for any questions you may have, otherwise we would request approval of each one of those sets of change orders.
Thank you very much. Um, so we will have time for any board member comments or questions about any of those change orders before we take action on each one of the four individually. So we'll start with Paula.
There. No questions or comments, thank you, Craig. Ms. Malik?
Uh, no comments or questions either, Mr. Paulus.
I think he just dropped off. I vote aye. Mr. Tensing?
Uh, I have no questions either. And there's Tim, he's back.
Hello. I have no.
You're up, thank you.
Uh, so it's back to me, I also have no questions, as always, detailed and helpful, um, for us to make sense of all of this. So, well done, Craig and Andy. Um, and we will now, um, move into the action items related to these change orders. So, uh, first up, do we have a motion to approve change orders six, seven, and eight for Centennial Elementary? So I, I heard a motion by Ms. Malik and I heard Mr. Tensing talk at the same time, so we're going to give him the second. Any further discussion?
Seeing and hearing none, I will pull the board, Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Hi.
If that was for me, then the answer is aye.
No, yeah, Ms. Mieschek.
I vote aye.
Clerk votes aye, and Ms. Brocki.
Aye, the change orders are approved. Um, we move next to, uh, change orders twenty-five and twenty-six for Richfield High School. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
Was that motion, Mr. Paulus?
Yes.
It was, thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Ms. Cole. Any final discussion?
Hearing and seeing none, I will pull the board, Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Hi.
Now I have my alphabet corrected, Ms. Mieschek?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
The clerk votes aye, and Ms. Brocki.
Aye, the change orders are approved. We turn next to change orders three and four for Sheridan Hills Elementary. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I will second.
So I believe that was a motion by Ms. Mieschek and a second by Mr. Paulus. Any final discussion?
Seeing and hearing none, I will pull the board, Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Hi.
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
The clerk votes aye, and Ms. Brocki.
Aye, the change orders are approved, and last but not least, um, change order number twenty-three for the Richfield STEM School. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of change order number twenty-three for Richfield STEM School.
I will second.
Uh, we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Mr. Tensing. Any final discussion?
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
The clerk votes aye, and Ms. Brocki.
Aye, the change order is approved. Um, so we now turn to first reads of four existing board policies, so we're taking all of these up for the first time. And Superintendent Unas, I will let you introduce the first one.
All right, so very exciting, the reward for passing policies in the last meeting, new policies. Just as a reminder of our process, um, we do a first read of policies just for review. Um, we also take a look at any accompanying MSBA policies. Board members should, um, send or reflect feedback to me. I've already gotten a couple of questions about, uh, policies from a couple of board members. Uh, the first one, four-one-one, four-eleven, is local and out-of-state travel. Uh, the MSBA policy is mainly focused at out-of-state travel for board members, um, but this for Richfield Public Schools has been expanded to local and out-of-state travel for both, uh, Richfield Schools staff and also board members. Um, and then there's a set of accompanying forms. Um, there's actually three financial policies in front of us tonight that MSBA do not believe has updated since 2009, which means there have not been statutory changes. And so this is something for us to read, review, uh, double-check with our finance team to make sure that these are the actual forms, and then also double-checking each of the policies to make sure that they're appropriate. So this is four-one-one, local and out-of-state travel, and I'll see if there's any questions.
Thank you. We'll go through just the quick round so that we stay consistent, um, in how we do our business. So Paula, we'll start with you.
No questions or comments at this time, Ms. Malik?
I have no questions either, Mr. Paulus?
Um, I just want, you know, other than correcting the, updating the, the school names to the modern version of them, could we please change that mileage chart to round up to the next, like, half mile? If, if someone is getting rich on the, on the tenth If someone is getting rich on the tenth of a mile extra, then we'll accept that. But the exactness of these measurements are really, really something. And so I would hate to oversee something this exact.
An actuary suggests we're too exact. Ironic, Mr. Paulus.
Oh, no. We're all about estimates. That's all I have. Ms. Mieschek?
No additional questions, Mr. Tensing?
The one question I have is, reading the policy, it looks to me as if travel out-of-state would... Well, it looks to me like there's almost like a board approval that's required. I mean, it's not stated that way, but the purpose of out-of-state travel is sort of deemed as when the board feels it's necessary. Is that something that... I mean, but yet, I mean, I think when we look at sort of the reimbursement and whatnot, it doesn't seem like approval is there. I guess that what I was looking for is a little bit more clarification on if there's an approval process and what that process might look like.
Sounds good. We can examine that and work that in. There is absolutely an approval process, and it is reviewed. So we will definitely look at this and update some of that language as we come back with a second round.
And no additional comments or questions from me. So I think we can move on to the next policy that's up for first review.
Yes. Next scintillating topic is policy 710, petty cash fund, another one that has not been updated in quite some time. You also have MSBA policy, and the point of the petty cash fund is to talk about reimbursements authorized for small expenditures. And so one of the things we'll be doing is reviewing our finance team protocols and making sure that this work aligns. And it just aligns to practices, and this aligns to best practices from our auditors. And so that is some of the work that we will do in the meanwhile.
Thank you. So again, board member comments or questions, starting with Paula. She's shaking her head, so I'll just go right to Christine.
No, I'm shaking my head because I'm playing the hide-and-seek game with my mic. Whoever knows how to make that not move, please let me know. And no, no comments. Ms. Malik?
No questions or comments either. Mr. Paulus?
I have nothing. Allegra?
No questions, Mr. Tensing?
Also, nothing from me. I will, I guess, look forward to getting the process feedback from business office.
Same here, and we will move on to a policy that I think might generate more conversation, which is 742 on student transportation.
Yes, just to sandwich in in the monotony of finances, we threw student transportation in. And the reason I really wanted this particular policy at this board meeting, because we do have three board meetings before the start of school, is as we begin to follow the governor's planning and as we talk about hybrid, distance, or in-person learning, one of the challenges that every school district is currently having is imagining and envisioning what transportation looks like. According to estimates at present, as few as thirteen kids could be possible on one full-size school bus. Those numbers may be low, and it might be larger than that, but that's something that we need to examine. And so 742 and guideline 742.1, along with the MSBA, we actually put in multiple policies, 707, 708, and 709, which seem like they are integrated into the Richfield Public Schools' transportation policy, are things that we thought would be important to examine. And some of the questions that come up in this conversation are around transportation boundaries. How far of a circle do we transport? One example would be we have gotten consistent feedback that there are some folk who would like us to move transportation boundaries in and transport every kid to school. Legally, from a statutory perspective, we are required to transport kids who are outside of two miles to school. And so as we examine and as we have the conversation, I think there are some reflections for board members to have. For us to have the transportation capacity to drive students to school within the legal requirements would be something different within the policy as it currently sits. And what I mean by that is if all of our students were to come back to school next year and be in present, and we could only fit thirteen students on a bus, we would have to go to approximately ten different transportation tiers to be able to fit everybody within our schools. And each tier is a half an hour, and just so you hear it out loud, 7:38, 8:39, 9:30, 10: 10:30, 11:00, 11:30, 12:00. If we were to follow our current transportation guidelines and the COVID requirements for the state of Minnesota that have been outlined as of today, we would have to start ten different tiers of busing to get our students in, and then obviously rotate ten different tiers of busing to get our students out. And so this is going to be an important piece to examine as we look at the fall and we think about things like start times, and are we going to need to be flexible with start times? Are we going to need to be flexible with our 742 transportation policy, which is why this one is here at this point, which is, do we want to consider different methodologies for transporting students to and from school? And so I'm not going to go too much further in depth, but what I am going to do is say that this is one that I want people to be reading and reflecting on, what are the things that are top priorities, not just in the short term, but also the long term, because those might be different, in A, the year of COVID, and the overall transportation of Richfield Public Schools. So with that, I will pause and turn things back for any questions or input.
Thank you. Definitely a lot of heavy things to think about and responsibilities for us as a board and as a district. So comments and questions on people's minds, at least as we start this, starting with Paula?
First of all, thank you to Craig Holgie for saving my life and teaching me how to use my keyboard to get my mic to work and not work, okay? Now with the transportation. So this is one of those things where we will, whatever happens, we will have this mandate from the government to provide, you know, that if we are providing transportation, then this is how it's going to work. But at the same time, like, what would it look at for a student to show up to school at noon? Like, how late are they even going to be there? So I'm trying to think of a way, and I want us to think of a way of how we could, if it gets to that, how we can figure out, like, with families, like, what kind of needs for transportation are there going to be so that if we can decrease the amount of students in need of transportation, that, you know, that maybe could help with the ratios and the start times and all of the staggered transportation needs. I told Steve today, and I know it's like a very unpopular thing, but I'm thinking about magnet schools and the, you know, requirements for transportation to STEM and our DLS. But, I mean, I'm glad that we're thinking about this, even though we don't really know what's going to happen, but this is daunting, and this is one of those things, just like every other thing with distance learning, where you want to do the best for students and also for the district and be financially responsible to what it would mean to have that many different routes and like how many drivers in a space where it's really hard to hire school bus drivers already and people who are willing to do it. Something I'm thinking to, I'm anticipating that there's going to be a need for another adult on the bus, maybe, to ensure distancing. I mean, every time I hear people talk about, like, schools, I can tell who's been in a classroom and who has never been to. Like, how do you keep kids, social beings, from being together and from touching and, you know, for playing or for friendship? Like, so I don't see, like, how a school driver alone will be able to ensure that kids are maintaining their distance. So it's a lot, but I am thankful that our, you know, that you guys, administration are thinking about, wait, I shouldn't say you guys, that you all at the administration are thinking about this ahead of the government's announcement, whatever happens. So that's all I have. Ms. Malik?
Thank you.
If you feel like sharing something.
I was just going to comment and say yes. Mr. Holgie and Doctors Daniels and Clark, or Daniels and Clarkson are leading teams, including a wide range of staff from different constituent groups, and are also working on processes to get input from students and families as we do some of this planning and find out different options for us to examine. The good thing is, and this is why I wanted this policy at this board meeting, is we'll have a lot more information before the next board meeting on August 3rd, and really don't have to make final decisions, even with this policy or some of the other ways, until, obviously, the first week of September. And we are going to just keep working on finding the best possible options. I think it's a great time to also mention that we do have a Safe Routes to Schools grant, and that Will Wislow, who's a member of Mr. Holgie's team, is working with another group and really looking at what do we do to create safe routes, possibly increasing school patrols and crossing opportunities, and creating a situation where we are able to get students to and from school in the most safe and effective ways possible, even with the pretty significant guidelines that are probably coming our way. Christine Malik?
Thanks. I agree, it's a little overwhelming to think about, but knowing the team that we have working on this, I kind of feel like they will be creative and they'll come up with an amazing plan. The thing to remember, the other thing to remember is that every other school district is trying to do the same thing, and so competition for bus drivers will be a challenge. So that's something we should be considering. Everybody is, I would expect, people will be, start to offer more money for people to do that, considering all of the challenges. Obviously, noon start time isn't really practical, but I think if we pull together a combination of all of these things and try some other creative things, also knowing in advance how soon, how many parents are planning to send their kids on the bus. I think communication to our families is really key through this and making sure that they know, especially if we make changes, because right now we don't go with two miles in all of our buildings, so if we're going to make changes like that, making sure that we are communicating that to families proactively so no one is surprised when if it happens. Otherwise, I think it's good that we have some time to think about it. It's going to take some creative work to figure out how to get all those kids to school. Mr. Paulus?
Absolutely. So we have communicated but really haven't surveyed yet. We've talked long and deep and had some really back-and-forth pushing about whether we survey yet or not. One of the things, we thought it's important to communicate, we have another district communication coming out Wednesday or Thursday of this week to everybody to update. And then we have surveys planned for after the announcement of the governor. We just feel that, you know, if we survey and ask people if they prefer distance, in-person, or hybrid, well, first, the state already did that, and second, we may not have a choice. So we may be asking about a choice that actually doesn't exist. And so we want to do that, when we do that survey, we want to get every single person in our district's response and actually use that data to plan all of our logistics for the fall. Mr. Paulus?
Thank you. No, I appreciate the comments and the timing of talking about transportation now, and, you know, Paula had brought up the challenges of the logistics of anyone who has firm stances on what school will look like, and, you know, people who seemingly have never been in a classroom or haven't been in one recently. But I've said for a number of times, the first logistical hurdle for us to having school open is transportation, and how in the world do we get them there? And so whatever we modify this to, whether it's modified merely for the upcoming school year and revisit it as things unfold, it's very timely, and it's something I've thought about a lot, and the challenges therein are going to be really significant. Regardless of how we word this policy, the implementation of it's going to be very difficult. Ms. Mieschek?
I know we're kind of in a hurry-up-and-wait situation with the next MDE release, but I do appreciate taking a look at this. One of the things Director Cole made me think of was like the liability, and I'm sure we're thinking about that, but like, whoa, you know, if a student, like, student management is so hard on a bus anyway, and thinking about, like, one student just going to sit somewhere else or mess with another kid, like, could have deadly consequences, and I don't know the extent to which we can have parents really sign off on that if they're going to put their kids on buses. And it's probably a bigger question for, you know, everything that happens at school. To what degree will schools be held accountable for students not following what will probably be really strict guidelines?
Yeah, I think part of the conversation is around school liability. I think there is an acknowledgement that you can't physically keep four-year-olds and five-year-olds in a socially-distanced environment in a strict way that actually is socially, emotionally appropriate for our four- and five-year-old students. And so I think some of sending students to school, should that be where they end up at that age, is an acknowledgement that that's going to be handled as best and most effectively as a district can, and that it can't be done as a hard and fast rule or expected in that way. So that is definitely a challenge. I guess, Mr. Tensing?
Yeah, I guess I don't have any particular detail to add other than to just kind of echo the sentiments that have already been expressed. I mean, this obviously will be challenging. And I think presumably it'll be time for us to be thinking about what are the principles that we're, kind of the guiding principles that we're trying to adhere to as we design a strategy. So, yeah, I guess it's a bit of a wait-and-see. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the thoughts that I would just add to what has been shared is, you know, I'm sort of struggling with the feeling that local districts are sort of being told we trust and value local control in a lot of cases, and that you need to make decisions that are right for your schools and your communities. And the other side of that sword is that also means we're left on our own without additional supports to actually solve these very real challenges that are really difficult for us to solve on our own. And so that feels like a real challenge for us in the next month and a half to come. And then I also just wanted to share appreciation for Steve. So earlier this morning, he and I joined a call at the invitation of Mayor Regan Gonzalez with the, I believe it was called the Regional Council of Mayors. So it was mayors from actually a fairly broad geographic area in the state, superintendents and a couple of board members. And in that conversation, which was fairly wide-ranging, about education in the fall, Steve really challenged the group to say transportation, to Tim's point, is one of the most immediate and urgent needs that we face. And if you all, as our partners in the city and as city leaders, really want to support us, you can help us think through potential options, potential ways we can actually support each other as we are trying to work through this. So I am hoping that other cities will sort of take that up and think about that. I know our mayor has already said she's eager to have these conversations with us as we get further down the road of figuring out what this could look like and what our needs actually are. So appreciation to our mayor and also to Steve for having that conversation, and hopefully helping other people think about it as an opportunity for collaboration and mutual support at the city level. And lastly, yeah, I am looking to our team. You all are the experts on this. This is an area in which I certainly would say we, as board members, do not have the expertise, and so need yours and need your recommendations, I think, to help us make sense of the choices ahead of us. And so I too just appreciate that this policy is coming up at this moment in time, especially because it has come up before in terms of what our boundaries are and what they should be. But now we're looking at that from a very different vantage point and a very different world. Any final comments or questions? Okay, we have one more new policy, or sorry, existing policy. Okay, uh, we have one more new policy or sorry, existing policy coming before us for our first read. Um, so Steve, I'll turn it back to you.
Yes, all right. So seven twelve, um, and guideline seven twelve one is also about credit card usage or the P-card um in Richfield schools. Um, and so this is another policy that has not been updated by the state since two thousand nine. Um, and so there really haven't been statutory changes that are significant around accounting. Um, in terms of P-card usage, it lays out the roles and responsibilities and how how that is laid out. And again, first read, and so we will look through, we'll check it with our finance team, make sure all of logistics match um and update it and make sure that it is up to speed.
Okay, we'll just do any immediate thoughts that people wanna share this evening, starting with Paula.
I got nothing, no comments. Uh, Ms. Malik.
Uh, no questions or comments, Mr. Paulus.
I I had a question. The the only thing I noticed really was there's something that the where it says in the policy that the P P-card, holding the P-card will not affect the the staff members' credit report. Can we really guarantee that?
I don't know, but uh we will definitely look at that uh before before we go forward.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing else. Ms. Misha.
I don't have any questions. Mr. Tensing.
Okay, I got myself unmuted. I'm good. Thank you, Ms. Brockie.
I am also good. Thank you. Um, so just one item of follow-up. So I think we're we're good to move forward to the last item of new business before us this evening, which is reviewing three very generous donations to the district. So I will turn it back over to the superintendent to share those.
Yes, so our athletic department had a very good month or a very good set of donations that are being acknowledged here. Uh, the Richfield Spartan Fund donated five thousand dollars to the athletics department to cover the cost of cameras installed in the main gym and the stadium that will be used for the live streaming of events. Our Richfield Spartan uh fund also donated seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars to the athletic department. Uh, the donation covered the cost of a new high jump pit and cover for our boys and girls track teams to use uh for practices and meets. We are very thankful for the generosity of the Richfield Spartan Fund. And the Richfield Dugout Club donated twenty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixteen cents to the athletic department, covering the cost of the equipment for the two thousand twenty baseball team. So we are thankful and honored by the generosity of the Richfield Dugout Club.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the donations?
I move that we accept the donations with gratitude.
All right, second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Mr. Tensing. Any further comments or questions?
Seeing none, I will pull the board. Ms. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Paulus.
Aye.
Ms. Misha.
Aye.
Mr. Tensing.
Aye.
The clerk votes aye and Ms. Brockie.
Aye. Uh, the donations are accepted with deepest of gratitude. Thank you. Uh, so we move next into the advanced planning section of the agenda, beginning with a legislative update. So I will look to or remember Pete Tensing or Superintendent Yunowski to share any news from the legislature.
So at this point, it's uh just awaiting uh a presumed special session that will be called uh, we expect to be called um in this next uh coming several weeks. I am unaware of any particular education-related um stuff that would be part of that session. But I guess we would just sort of keep our ears to the ground to see how that plays. I don't know, Steve, if you have anything else.
Um, only to add that the emergency order obviously was extended, which means our August 3rd meeting, we would anticipate, will also be uh a distance meeting, uh but we'll definitely closely examine the meeting on August seventeenth um and whether or not we feel we can accommodate in person. And we will strive, as long as the governor does not say otherwise, to try, and this will be the heads up to this team. We'll try to have that board meeting in person at at the district office um for August seventeenth, if at all possible.
Any other legislative items specifically? Okay, I don't see any. So um we move next into time for information and or questions members of the board would like to share with each other. And I am going to begin with the public summary of our closed session from June twenty-ninth as allowed by Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point oh five for purposes of the superintendent's annual evaluation. We are grateful for Superintendent Yunowski's leadership and the work he does as our district's leader. And that has been made very clear this year. Uh, we spoke at length in the evaluation process about the significant challenges we have faced as a district and as a community in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. First, in a conversation with myself and Tim Paulus as chair and vice chair, and then as a full board in the closed session during our meeting on June twenty-ninth. Inputs to the evaluation process included gathering feedback from each of the superintendent's direct reports, which includes all of our building principals. And we are very grateful to them for um sharing their experiences as part of this process. We also considered feedback from the community that has been gathered throughout the year in both formal and informal mechanisms. We believe Superintendent Yunowski has done a very good job in navigating these challenging times for Richfield Public Schools. His strength in managing a complex institution through uncertainty has certainly benefited the young people and staff of Richfield Public Schools in the last few months in particular. And as this evaluation made clear, we have confidence in his abilities and believe he consistently meets and or exceeds expectations using our superintendent evaluation rubric. At the same time, there are always areas for growth. And we look forward to working with him to both finalize the aims of our next five-year strategic plan, as we discussed earlier this evening, and also to set goals and define success for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Um, and of particular interest to all of us is developing a lasting and sustainable focus on excellence and equity across the district. So I invite other board members to share any additional comments that they would like as we move into the information and or questions from the board members section of the agenda, which as always starts with Paula and special guest Nadia.
Hi, uh, no, I just want to uh thank you for uh putting Crystal summarizing uh our conversation from from last week and just to thank uh Steve uh for his hard work and and uh how much uh I appreciate the communication and the updates and uh the feeling that I kind of know what's going on at all times, even though I know there's way much more happening. But uh uh, that's, that's really just what I wanted to share uh with everyone. Thank you, Steve.
Um, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Crystal and Tim for the work they did in gathering all of the input from the board and the admin team. I know that's a lot of work. And especially for the admin team on sharing their perspectives also, because they see things that the board doesn't necessarily see. And I think it gives us just a much broader picture of how things are going. And the consistency with their perspective and the board pers- perspective really, I think, brought things together and um and showed how how much we all really appreciate the work that Steve has done for our district this past year. It's been a, it's been a challenging year and we thank you for all of your work, Steve. Go on to Tim.
Thanks. I I just want, I, just to correct, I would thank Crystal for all of the work and for including me in a very lim- you know, it it is as open as as she was in allowing me to participate in it and and have a role. She actually did the work-work part of it and soliciting and gathering all the information and feedback from everyone and um and running, running the the review. And and she did a wonderful job and and it was relatively easy, given, given how consistent the feedback was. And so it really is is representative of of the the, a job well done. And I look forward to more. Ms. Misha.
I think uh times of crisis really stress systems and show cracks. And um I didn't really see any that were obvious. So I think that's a testament to Steve's leadership and and just um that brought so much comfort to me as a board member. And I know it brought a lot of comfort to our community that um like the ship was was sailing and people felt confident. So um, thank you for your leadership, especially in this challenging time.
So uh, one of the reflections that I wanna make um is, you know, evaluating the superintendent is probably and supervising the superintendent is probably one of the biggest responsibilities that we have as board members. And I am grateful to this group, to this team, um for the uh sort of seriousness with which we have undertaken um this effort. And I guess I do wanna recognize the work um that has been put in, I think, by many different members of this board over time to really strengthen our process for superintendent evaluation. You know, we have with, you know, working along with Craig Holgy, um, looking at what our best practices around the area. We spent a number of years, I think, um crafting a process for evaluation of the superintendent um that is quite robust, um and I think would stand up to probably pretty much anybody in the state. That we are holding Steve to a higher level of accountability um than what you're gonna see uh in a lot of other districts. And so I just want the community to be aware that when Crystal talks about all of that feedback and input that we are getting, um whether it be from Steve's direct reports, whether it be from survey processes, um, it's all important and we take it all seriously. Um, and that's one of the things that I'm most grateful for with Steve as well is how effectively and willingly he takes that feedback and takes that constructive criticism and grows and improves um the work that he's doing. So I just wanna thank my colleagues on the board, uh, recognize um Crystal and Tim for their work in leading this and recognize also Christine. Um, I know you've done a lot over the years to make this a really robust process. And then finally, recognize Steve for being a very willing participant and taking that feedback and running with it and growing as a professional. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think Pete very well said, so I will just share my last word on a totally different topic, um, which was that I uh was able to attend the reopening of the Richfield Historical Society this past weekend um as they opened their doors back up after being closed for several months, obviously for public health reasons. Um, and there is a lot of Richfield Public School uh history on display in the historical center. Um, and just wanted to sort of publicly affirm their commitment to working with us and desire um to support programs and learning for RPS students as the historical society and just encourage people to check it out. They are gonna be open again this coming Saturday, right there on school district grounds uh on on Lindell Avenue. So just wanted to share that. Um, and let's see here, just a couple of last things. Our next meeting will be on Monday, August third at seven P M. Um, as has been shared, we expect that to be online and then are gonna be revisiting the question of the Monday, August seventeenth board meeting and whether that will be online or in person. Are there any items that board members would like to request for discussion on an upcoming agenda? If so, please come off mute and let us know.
I just wanted to share that Nadia is listening to the meeting. We are sharing the headphones. And she refused to go to McDonald's to stay with y'all. So uh you are a very impressive group.
That's a few board member right there.
That's right. The thing that poor child is used to sometimes makes me feel kind of sad, but it's okay. We're raising an activist and a public servant, so that's, that's okay. Ms. Malik.
So a couple of things, oh, go ahead, Christine.
I have nothing. Go ahead.
A couple of things real quick. First, hi, Nadia. Glad you're here. Uh, second thing is, we will have in one of the coming two meetings um an update on our summer school. And just as a reminder, summer school launched today. Um, we have online learning occurring in our middle school and high school. Um, and some of that online learning is synchronous or live. And so we have teachers actually teaching, uh specifically in middle school for the most part. Um, and then we also have two programs running simultaneous in elementary. And we have left that up to the choice of our families. And so we have some in person and we have some distance learning. Um, and so we will be able to update the process of that. Um, and so that'll be coming in one of the next two meetings. And then I did not respond, and I just wanted to say thank you for the evaluation process. I appreciate the feedback. I also appreciate this board, um, which is highly supportive, um, not just in in leadership and in Richfield overall, but also supportive in pushing with feedback and pushing with expectations to help me be my best and to help our district be its best for our students. One of the things provided by the board and the superintendent evaluation process is a part of it is a system of accountability to ensure that all of us always have our eyes on the prize. And that prize being outcomes for students that allow them to achieve their dreams. And so thank you for a very uh thorough evaluation process and thank you for the opportunity to participate in that. Sorry, Christine Malik, you are back up.
Thanks. I had no um So, Mr. Paulus.
Um, I have no, no items for future um agenda items. I just wanna point out the the Spartan Foundation, which is, has its annual golf event, has the cl- has decided to cancel or postpone the event for two thousand twenty and will be back in June of of two thousand twenty-one. Um, a lot of, a lot of sadness around that, as you've seen the the generosity of their of their spirit and and their funds towards towards both the district in terms of activities and athletics, but also to the students who who um earn the scholarships that they give out every year and and did this year as well, despite not having as the usual level of of recognition. They they will still be trying to solicit funds from people to see if people will will remember to support them even in in um through a bad year like this for everyone. And so please be on the lookout for for something like that. Allegra.
I don't have anything to add. Uh, Mr. Tensing.
I'm good. Uh, I'll pass it back to the chair.
Thank you very much. Um, with that, Steve, I assume you said your final pieces that you wanted to say just a moment ago? Okay, so our final item of business on the agenda is to adjourn. And since this doesn't require a board vote, I will officially adjourn the meeting as chair at eight forty-seven P M. Have a good night, everyone, and we will see you again on August third.
Bye-bye.